To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple additions to the agenda. So I know Todd sent an email out this weekend about the strategic plan and I'm sorry that we weren't able to get in the packet for your perusal over the weekend. I'm going to be in DC next Monday night. I thought the council meeting was the following, not the holiday weekend, but the following one. And I'm going with SIMCOG, so I'm an officer with SIMCOG, and we're going to meet with all the congressmen and senators from the southeast Michigan region, the seven county area. So I will be in DC working on SIMCOG issues Monday night, and I'll be back on Tuesday. So I asked Todd if we could work on this scurry, scurry and get this on the agenda. So maybe at least hear the feedback and then if we have some issues with it, we can adopt it at the next meeting. So if we could put that under new business to approve and adopt the City of Celine strategic plan 2011 to 2012 as submitted, or we'll leave it as submitted for the time being and see if there's any editorial comments or changes.
That would be item number 25?
Right, 1125. And then I also had a couple of things to report out on, so I'm going to add them under discussion. I did meet with the Chamber Executive Committee representing myself and Todd regarding having the joint meeting that we've been talking about for a while, and I have a preliminary agenda and some dates, so I'd like to put that under discussion. Also, I also have a handout about an economic, a leadership development, training institute, seminar with the NLC regarding economic development, and that's why I was a little late here at SIMCOG for everybody. There's opportunity for scholarship money, so all you'd have to do is pay for the airfare. And the application for the scholarship is due by February 18th, and that was emailed to me last weekend. I'm very interested in attending, and they recommend having several people attend if it would be of interest to our community, and I think it's really all about globalization. And we'll get a chance to read it. And basically what I'd like to do is just have it as a handout, talk a little bit about it, and then obviously we wouldn't be submitting a scholarship application if there wasn't interest in doing that, but since there are some deadlines around that. So are there any other changes to the agenda? Okay, actually I had this bike race too, so, well, I have a couple other things, but we'll just add as we go on. So do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Move Girba?
Second.
Second, Har. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we'll save the absences for at the end of the meeting. We have an honored guest here tonight, our state representative Mark Womack. Would you like to say a few words and tell us how things are going in Lansing?
Well, thank you very much. I just wanted to take a moment and kind of update you as to what's going on so far, but obviously to set the stage of what's going to be occurring. I just wanted to let you know I'm serving on three committees. One is transportation, second is taxation, and then I'm chairing the Intergovernmental Committee, which we'll be dealing with starting tomorrow. Act PA 72, which is emergency financial management. In that, we're going to have both the governmental piece of it, which has been housed in that committee normally, which would be townships, villages, cities, any type of authorities. But they're also now going to be adding to that committee the schools, which will be a huge challenge, as you're all aware of, and particularly for some of the school districts in and around Detroit. So we'll be dealing with that as well. We're going to start to work on a bill, starting tomorrow, regarding the types of level of governmental involvement with, through the financial manager. So it's going to be something that's pretty wide sweeping, but certainly more to come on that. And serving on taxation, as you know, is a key role in some of the things that certainly cities and villages and townships are going to be facing. So we're going to be spending a lot of time working off of the governor's agenda. It's going to start rolling out this coming week, and we'll certainly know more on the 17th when he talks about his budget, and that's when we'll really see what things are and get a better understanding for what direction Governor Snyder is going to be taking. With that, I can stop, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from council? I just wanted to let council know that I did comment to a representative before the meeting that I just prepared a letter, a cover letter to send to stay of the city address, which I don't know if we already sent up to Lansing to our representatives yet, and then also a letter, we're working on a letter addressing the elimination of personal property tax revenue, which is currently 22% of our revenue, which would be debilitating. And for Celine, we're actually in a lot better condition than some of the cities that you're talking about addressing with the financial management. So, you know, that's just not a doable alternative without something to replace that, you know. So we are going to be detailing the historic revenue reductions related to statutory revenue sharing that has actually caused us to raise our mileage, not recently, but over time in the beginning of the decade, the last decade, and then also, you know, some of the stuff that we've been doing to, you know, aggressively recruit business with the idea that we are a very pro-business community and we are very well-recognized for the fact that while we don't guarantee an abatement when somebody comes to our community as a business, you know, we have a very strong history and track record of being very pro-business friendly. So that's not a viable option for municipalities at this point in time unless there's another revenue source that's of the same, or at least close to that significance.
Right, and I would agree with you. Certainly the surcharge tax that's out there now, I'm almost sure will be eliminated relatively soon. So if that piece is removed, then there's also, that just widens the $1.8 billion gap. And so, like anything else, we need to find how are you going to fill that? And there's a lot of challenges because a lot of my colleagues on the Republican side have taken the no-tax pledge, so I don't know how that direction is going to go as we start down that path.
Well, I guess my thing, and the same thing happened with SBT, they removed the SBT without a replacement.
Right.
If you need to remove something, please do not just say, well, somebody else is going to figure it out later, or, I mean, there needs to be some kind of resolution. It can't just be a removal of a revenue source. Because we really, local government doesn't really have, and we don't, I'm sorry, I invited you to come and talk about what's going on, but this was like, you know, last week the league's like, red alert, red alert.
Hey, if you're dying, go ahead, far away.
No, well, it was, you know, the league was, you know, I mean, it's a really big deal, you know.
Yeah, we've met with the league, they probably have told you they've been in the office.
Yeah, so I just wanted to, you know, and I know Mr. Rhodes probably, I'm sorry if I, if you had something, but I'm, you know, totally hyped up about it at the moment, so.
Well, what we have done, we've scheduled, and many of the organizations, statewide organizations, come talk to our committee, and SIMCOG certainly is one of them that is, and they've met, we've gotten together and had a very nice discussion for an hour or so in my office to talk about their needs. And one of the things that we're doing is trying to line up what are the alike issues of a lot of, like the Township Association and those organizations, to see what are we agreeing on and find out areas that we need to work on.
Great. Thank you, sorry, but anyhow.
Mayor Driscoll covered much of what I was going to say anyway, but, and I'm sure you heard this from a lot of places, but I would just urge the legislature to do what they can to remove the uncertainty that exists right now. Because when people are uncertain about what taxes are going to be where, then people don't make decisions, and when they don't make decisions, business doesn't happen, and the economy just kind of grinds to a halt. So we are all anxiously awaiting your efforts.
Well, there are really three paths that have been talked about, that have, two of them have tried in the past, and one is do nothing, and the other is a very slow approach. The third, which I think will be, the approach that's going to be up in Lansing, it's like tearing a Band-Aid off, and it's going to be relatively quick, and people have been working on tax issues for long before the governor took the oath of office. So I think we're, at this point, some, almost 40 days into it, I think they're probably in about as good a place, but we have not really seen exactly what the governor has in mind yet, and so we're all anxiously awaiting that. But these are going to be pieces of a puzzle, taxation being obviously a large piece of that puzzle. Act 72 will be another, 312 will be another. I mean, there's a whole group of things out there that are going to have to be dealt with relatively quickly, so we can bring aid to the cities, the school districts that need it the quickest. We have, just to give you an idea, that there are 41 school districts now in the state that, out of 550, that do not make formula in regards to a wellness test. We think there's going to be 40 a year for the next three years will be added to that list, so we're going to have substantial amount of school districts. And I would imagine that municipalities may be joining those kinds of numbers as well. And so the governor clearly understands when you lessen something in a tax revenue, how is that going to have an overall effect on the picture, because that just exacerbates the issue if you start reducing revenue from schools and/or municipalities.
Okay, any other questions for state representatives? Well, really appreciate your taking time to come to our meeting tonight, and anytime you'd like to come in, and we will be gentle, even if we're really overwrought with impending due.
Hey, you know, I'm used to this.
Okay.
But I appreciate it, and obviously always feel free to contact me about your thoughts, and we're going to try to be proactive to get this input prior to formulating any policies whatsoever.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
We also have citizen comment on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward this time, may comment or question items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council on agenda items? Now, we'll move on to consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted at discussion, wherever at the request of any citizen or councilman, or any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Moved to approve as submitted?
Move Rhodes, do we have a second? Second, Girba? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under new business item 1123, this is a patrol car purchase. This would be a motion to acknowledge receipt of February 2nd, 2011 memo from Public Works Director Ford Eyes to approve or not approve the purchase of a 2011 Ford Crown Victoria Police Interceptor from Gornow Ford in the amount of $21,062, and to declare the 1998 Ford Taurus VIN number, as elaborated in the text, as surplus property and authorize it to be sold by auction or by bid.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Move Ivy, second, Marl to approve. Discussion. Mr. Marl.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question that I think should be directed to city manager Campbell in Chief Button's absence. And Mr. Campbell, I know you and I and the chief have discussed this, the issue of police cars at length in the past, but is my understanding correct that 2011 is the last year that Ford Motor Company will be manufacturing and marketing Crown Vics?
At least for the near term.
That's your understanding as well?
Correct.
Okay. And again, I know we've spoken about this, but just to get it on the public record, can you elaborate in an attempt to be proactive what we're thinking about doing in the future, knowing that we probably won't have access to Crown Vics?
Right. Actually, the police department has a committee, if you will, of staff that are evaluating the choices, and they'll come back with a recommendation.
Okay, very good. I'm glad an entity like that has been created, and of course, I enthusiastically endorse this motion. Thank you, Mayor.
Is there further discussion? Mr. Ivey?
Thank you, Mayor. I would follow up to Mr. Marl's question regarding the 2011 Crown Vic. It is the last of its breed that's planned, and Ford is going to replace it with a new model in 2012 that's based on the Taurus. And there's some question whether that is going to be comparable to the Crown Vic in terms of its ability. I think it's a front-wheel-drive vehicle and not a rear-wheel-drive.
And there's an all-wheel drive option.
There is an option? Now, the question that somebody might pose is, the Crown Vic that we intend to purchase by approving this motion is 250 horsepower, eight-cylinder vehicle that on average gets about 17 miles per gallon, and that's not even fully loaded with all the equipment and such that the police department would put it inside. It does have the option to run on E85 fuel, but there are other vehicles, and they are available through the Michigan Deal Program that we participate in. There is a new Dodge Charger Pursuit that came out just this year, which gets 22 miles per gallon, has comparable horsepower, and is only a six-cylinder. And I wonder if the DPW director or the city manager could maybe say something to help council understand that although a vehicle that gets more miles per gallon is available, we're getting one that gets less, because I think there are bona fide reasons we're doing this, but I wonder if we might go into those.
Sure. We can tag to you if you'd like, but one of the things that's very important is room, there's space in the vehicles with all of the different, between the radios and the laptops and the mobile printers and everything that goes in, it's getting increasingly, even with the Crown Vics, it's getting increasingly difficult to be able to have enough space to have a spot for a second person. While, now, while we don't typically obviously have two people, well, sometimes we do when we have our part-timers or our reserve officers ride along, but there are, as you're certainly correct, Mr. Raby, there are a number of different vehicles, police vehicles, but some of them, a lot of them, just don't have the room. But Chevrolet is coming out, or bringing back, I should say, the Caprice. You may recall the large, for lack of a better term, the boat from the 80s and 90s, the big Caprices, while they're not as large as that, but the new one is coming out and they'll be available, I believe, late this year. So, but anyway, that will be one that will be evaluated, and that actually has a six-cylinder as well. But that has, and I can't tell you off the top of my head right now the square footage as far as space, but the Dodges are close, but some of the, like for instance, the Impala is much smaller, and while they're certainly, they are viable, you see them out in different agencies utilize them, but they are, again, front-wheel-drive, as you mentioned, but also very small, very cramped to do that, so. And I'm happy to turn anything, if Jeff has any additional information or comments.
Yeah, there's at least a couple other significant reasons. One is that a fair amount of the equipment in the old patrol car, the 2006, is specific to a Crown Victoria, and that equipment can be taken out of that one and put into the new vehicle, which is a significant money savings. And I don't have the MyDeal price sheet here with me tonight, but the Chargers are more expensive.
Actually, the difference, looking at the prices that were in the program for the Michigan Deal, amount to a difference of about $1,300.
Right.
Capacity certainly is a factor, and availability of the equipment in the previous vehicles to be able to transfer, and that's a big factor too. What I read though, which impressed me the most, and I hope all our council will also support this motion, what I read was that there have been quite a few problems with the brakes on these new Dodge patrol cars, and about every 8,000 miles, they have to replace the brake pads. And I read that one of the police officers in Las Vegas said that they bought 20 Dodge, not the 2011s, but a couple of years ago, they bought 20 of them, and practically all of them that have over 120,000 miles aren't drivable, whereas a Crown Vic can get anywhere between 200,000 and 400,000 miles. So there's a trade-off there. Yeah, it's not getting as many miles per gallon, but it's going to last longer, and it's not going to be that much more costly compared.
Yeah. I don't know if they run the police cars through a different mileage cycle, but the EPA city highway mileage ratings, I don't think have much relevance to police work. There's a, you know, there's an awful lot of idling time and much more of a very city, you know, low speed, a lot of stops. So I'm not sure if those are really valuable comparison figures using the EPA figures, just because of the very specific type of driving that they do.
Further discussion? Just really quick, I think I talked with Mr. Campbell a little bit about the whole mileage thing too, and I don't know if you got a chance to talk, we actually have the Ford government relations person who did a tour for elected official for mayor's, the first day of the auto show before it was open to the public, and I was able to go, and they are very focused on, you know, the making sure that they have a vehicle that serves police needs in the future. And I don't know if you were able to follow up with him at all about that, because I actually was running a little bit late, so that was where they started, because that's obviously a really big, important issue for municipalities, is having vehicles that serve the needs for our public safety units, but also trying to move towards more energy efficiency. So I don't know if you could, Mr. Campbell, because I know we were talking with him too also about the electric charging station that I mentioned to you, so we could follow up to for the future, but, you know, I think that Ford is still interested in being, you know, out there in front on the cars being the number-one car for police. So is there further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under 1124, Arrow Uniform Contract Extension for Uniform and Mat Services, this is a motion to acknowledge receipt of February 2nd, 2011 memo from Public Works Director Ford Eyes to approve or not approve the three-year contract extension with Arrow Uniform for Uniform and Mat Services for a contract period from March 1, 2011 to March 1, 2014, and an approximate cost of $9,700 as outlined, and to authorize or not authorize the mayor clerk to execute the agreement addendum as submitted.
Moved to approve and authorize.
Move Rhodes, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Girba? Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 1125, it was adds to the agenda's motion to approve and adopt the City of Celine strategic plan 2011 to 2012 as submitted, and maybe we could just, since we hopefully had a chance to look at it, I know that Mr. Campbell emailed it this weekend, but it's always better to have it in hard copy, at least me personally, I have a hard time reading things online as far as the layout and the, you know, editorial, at least sometimes it's harder to catch things. So did everybody get a chance to look it over? And we tried to make sure that we integrated the most recent goals in as clear a manner as possible with the, you know, the overarching values, I guess I would call them, or the common vision that we've developed over the last couple of years that are priorities. Does anybody have any questions about it? Mr. Rhodes?
One question under the category be a sustainable city. There's a similar to a bullet, a dash that's blank, and I didn't know if something got left out or if it was deleted and just didn't get closed up.
Yep, good point.
I don't know what's supposed to be in there.
I don't either, so, might just be, it was sort of a, you know, we both did some time working on this, so I did a, you know, highlighted draft. I don't know, Todd, do you want to just take comments and then if there is no change, just adopt it at the next meeting and make sure we didn't miss a bullet?
Certainly, yep, that'd be great.
I just wanted to, since I wasn't able to meet the, be at the next meeting, you know, we've worked really hard on this as a council team to be, have something to put forward. I also am, you know, we, I think we should actually put it under discussion, but we have been talking about this business luncheon, and I thought it'd be really great to have this document to provide to our business leaders in the community, so they know where we're heading, you know, where our goals are. And so I was also trying to get this approved in February, and again, you know, it also is what we use to build our budget, so we're trying to get it moving as quickly as possible. So if, does anybody, any council members on this side? Mr. Ivy?
Thank you, Mayor. Where we're heading, you just, I think, articulated exactly what this document intends to do. I would like to make an editorial suggestion, the very last paragraph, which we have entitled conclusion. I think reading through that paragraph, really, the two key words that stick out with me are moving forward, and fitting in with the where we're heading theme, I think maybe we should retitle that paragraph. Conclusion really kind of, that's like what happens at the cemetery. Let's say going forward, or moving forward, or something a little more dynamic, I think, would work there. That's the only suggestion I had.
Oh, it's a conclusion?
I thought the rest of it was very well, very well composed.
Any other comments from council? Mr. Law?
Without the risk of complicating the issue, which I don't want to, everyone knows obviously my opposition to many of the environmental policies that are in this document. Under be a sustainable city, I'm not against all of it, but certainly a good part of it. And again, I don't want to have to complicate it by breaking each and every section down and voting on it separately. As a rule, I support much and most of everything that's in here, with the exception of the sustainable city. So when it comes up for a vote next week, I would just want to make it clear for the record that I do not support much of what's in the sustainable city section of this document, but I will support what else is in here, just so everyone understands, not only obviously the council, but everyone in the community as well.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, well, I think we'll take those notes and we'll meet, I expect, not meeting this afternoon, so we'll have a chance to do agenda and everything this week. Any further discussion on this strategic plan? We're going to, we don't have a motion on the floor, so what I would do, since we don't have a motion on the floor, is just move it to, can I just postpone it to the next meeting without a formal, because we don't have a motion out there. Is that okay with everybody?
So it'll come back on the 14th, Mayor?
It'll be on the 14th agenda. Okay, under discussion items, we have any commissioner committee reports?
Mr. Har. Mayor Driscoll. The Arts and Culture Committee will meet next Monday evening, February 14th, at 7:00 PM. This is a half an hour before the normal meeting time. The meeting is starting at 7:00, so council members will be, have the opportunity to review the refined design for the public art project before we begin our regular meeting. We will have a presentation from artist Tricia Huffman, who is designing the bench component of the public art project. She will present revised design plans along with color rendering and a model, as well as material and color samples for review. So the committee welcomes attendance from council and also from any interested members of the community.
Any other commissioner committee reports? Mr. Girba?
My recent appointment at Historic District Commission, and I basically will wrap up a little bit of what's going on, since I'm fairly new to the group. Dave Rose presented a review of what's going on at the Rensselaer Farm, some of the concerns out there being the hope for us to support their two-year plan in renovating and repairing what has been some deferred maintenance and such out there as we go through that budget for this coming year. Also, we approved two different window replacement areas, one building being 201 South Ann Arbor Street, which they're looking at replacing all the windows in the building, really because the historical nature of that building kind of gone away, but because of the type of windows are in place, it'd be fine. And also an individual's looking at replacing one window in the back of their house as an example to try and see how it's going to look in the future. But one of their concerns and one of their ideas that they, one of the members had mentioned is that potentially we could come up with a website that would provide some maybe successes and examples of how windows have been replaced. and examples of how windows have been replaced, or different resources and such that people could use to see how that would work in their homes and such. Some of those had concerns about how the actual ways of looking to see what they can do to their homes and such was kind of difficult, and they had to go through and find out the different things for credits and such. And so maybe if we can produce more of a resource for that, it would be beneficial.
Got a bunch of old windows that are really leaking. Got my little styrofoam in there.
Any other commission committee reports?
No.
Reports or any other announcements?
I just, the ATA is having a meeting tomorrow to talk about the three alternatives. They spent most of last year, probably the last six months, they came and presented. I think some of you attended that meeting, and they have compiled, they hired a consultant, and they used long-range demographic data. You know, it's a 30-year plan, and they've come up with three alternatives, and they're seeking feedback from the public regarding those alternatives. I will say, because I was on a leadership committee for that, that there is a plan that has Celine as a hub, a transit hub, with Mylan and Manchester coming through Celine, and I think it could be very beneficial to our economy, actually, in Celine, too. So it's a really long-term plan, but with phases for implementation, depending on which plan you go with. But for those of you that could make it, I think you'll find it very informative, and I believe it's currently on the website. I think you did a press release about it, or any time. Is there any other reports or announcements?
Mr. La.
I just wanted to let everyone know, the Winter Fest that was last week, I think, was by and large quite successful. The committee that has been meeting off and on for the better part of a few months, getting this planned out, will have a wrap-up meeting on Wednesday to just sort of go over what happened, what can be improved on. Being the first one, there's always areas where you're going to improve, obviously. And so we hope to build on this and keep it going for next year. The snowman competition, I think, was a great success. In fact, we won the competition, which is great news, and we're going to decide how we're going to have Frosty the statue, which we will take from, is it St. Clair? I can't remember. I think that's where it was. How the public can see it and sort of pump up the fact that we will have another Winter Fest next year. And the ice rink certainly played a big part in it. I think the one, if my opinion, which I want to give on this matters, is that I think more events should be concentrated downtown, and we certainly learned from that experience. And we'll see what we can do about that to bring more people downtown. And I think it was, I think it was, the response was very positive. So, thank you.
Yeah, actually, I had that on my list to say thank you to all the volunteers that worked on it and the planning committee and Art. They all did a great job, and I know everybody that I talked to had a really good time, and I got really positive feedback. I would agree, the only maybe weak spot was the downtown. So, Mr. Rhodes, did you have a report or announcement?
I had a more than the nature of an announcement. One is to follow up on the Winter Fest comments, and that is that the 5K walk-run fundraiser that was put on for the teen center was very successful. Wanted to, again, thank DPW and the police department, as well as our volunteers for their assistance in doing that. We had, I believe, 112 individuals who ran. There were no injuries or accidents, and I was down at the finish line for the latter part of it, and people who were crossing the finish line actually had a smile on their face, which is hard to believe, but.
It was a perfect day.
They were happy. It was great. And then the other thing I wanted to comment on was that the Downtown Merchants Association is putting on Ladies Night Out this Thursday from 3:00 to 9:00. And many of the downtown merchants are offering special activities for those who attend.
Great. I don't, I guess we'll do the strategic plan and then, because I have a couple of handouts that I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. So did everybody get a chance to review Mr. Campbell's updates of the current strategic plan that, and do you have any questions or comments about? And you'll update this on the website, too?
Correct.
Okay. So we just want to make sure there wasn't anything outstanding that you felt we needed to add or change. Okay. So I have some handout, sorry. Let's see here. So we'll start with the one on the top. I mentioned briefly at the beginning of the meeting, I received, being on the National League of Cities Board, I've been involved with specifically the Community Regional Development Committee, which is a, I don't know what it's called, forum? It's like a focus group kind of thing. And I think that when, in December, when I came back, we talked about, yeah, if you could take one from each pile, I was trying to sort it. There was a company, not a company, but a university that does economic development survey of what kind of businesses we have and how to leverage our resources further. And I've had some conversation with Todd about, you know, how to further develop our economic development, and we've had some discussions in our goal setting also regarding that. And last week, I got an email from Jim Brooks, who's the head of, he is involved with a research, but also International Council, which I, actually, Todd and I have also been to some sessions, because they have a program in Germany where they do like an internship. And so we've talked about possibly doing that, and there's also been an opportunity, I've had the opportunity a couple of times to coordinate a trip to China, do some business joint venture possibilities. So basically, what this is, is they, for some of you that have been to NLC programs, which stands for National League of Cities, they have what's called Leadership Training Institute, and they are doing specifically, based on feedback and obviously what's going on nationally. Did you get this package? Did you get that far? There should be an extra copy for you. Sorry. Thought, anyhow. Anyhow, basically, it's for, so National League of Cities Center for Research Innovation is doing a leadership academy on local economic competitiveness in a global era, which is something that we talked about in our work sessions regarding trying to really access the global economy and not just the local economy. And so there's a press release attached in here, and again, I just really want to bring this up for your information for a couple of reasons. One, they are offering scholarship opportunities, so you need to apply for that by February 18th if you want to be considered. I am very interested in this because I think that this is an excellent program. It will be, I mean, the Chamber of, the US Department of Commerce and Treasury, they also have, the organization that's hosting this is the Trade Development Alliance of Greater Seattle, who I heard speak at a session at one of the NLC conferences, and they are so heads and shoulders as far as regional economic development. It's pretty mind-boggling. So I think there's going to be some great opportunities for learning. I'm also going to be forwarding this to the SEMCO organization, because I worked on a subcommittee with them regarding the, it's like the economic development, I'm not sure what it's called, but it's basically an economic development program that in order to receive federal economic development money, you have to have a CETA. I'm not sure what that stands for. Anyway, I think there's some great opportunities here, and I wanted to know if anybody else was interested in participating. It's April 20th and 21st, and I basically, it would be two nights, and then the airfare is $350, and this would be assuming we got scholarships. So just read it over, and if you have any questions or anything. But I do think that basically what this two-day seminar would be doing is helping us learn how to be, think more globally when we do economic development and not just the traditional routes that we've been utilizing in the past. So I don't know if anybody has any questions about that? I know I'm just handing out tonight, I apologize, but just got it last week. So that's that.
The sheet five and six, the total application?
Yep. For the scholarship piece. And they don't, you know, I spent a couple of days trying to get the actual, I think this is coming together really quickly, and I think there's some federal government money involved, would make this program come together, because they don't even have like the agenda. That's sort of why I waited till the last minute, because I was like, what day does it start? You know, and they are actually having a tour of Boeing's facility Tuesday afternoon and opening event on Tuesday evening, and then all day Wednesday, and then it ends Thursday at 1:00. So we could fly back Wednesday, Thursday afternoon, excuse me. So I, Jim Brooks is pretty, you know, Todd's met him, I don't know, Pat, if you got a chance to meet him, but they're very upfront on what things are going on. In December, we had, there was a council member from, Joe, where's Joe from? Joe. Anyhow, he's developed quite a healthy relationship with South Africa and some economic opportunities there, and there's been some good partnerships. So I just feel like there could be some, you know, for a nominal amount of money, if we could get a couple of new businesses coming into our region, even if it wasn't Celine, I think it would be really beneficial. Obviously, Celine would be number-one priority for me, and I would love it if there would be some other council members that would be interested in attending. But I do think it would be a great opportunity to leverage what we currently have at a higher level and really address the global economy. So let me know if you have any questions, and I just wanted to let you know about that. And then the chamber, joint chamber meeting, which is the one pager, is a, we set, we talked about two dates, March 2nd or March 9th, which are both Wednesday mornings, because the board currently meets on a Wednesday, so we felt like if we carried that forward. We're thinking 7:30 to 9:00 AM. We could start at 7:30, and this is a whole draft, but basically, we sort of did some brainstorming, sort of finding opportunities for collaboration by reviewing. I mentioned that we had just completed our goals and objectives for next year, and we'd like to share that with them. And I know they just did a retreat that Todd participated in. Also, we wanted to talk to them about the Ceroli Institute and entrepreneurial support. And then, you know, obviously, the Machine Main Street Program, moving forward with that, and how that would impact our partnership with the Chamber and also the downtown. And then I put down business luncheon results, but depending on whether or not that ends up being before or after, because we don't really have a date yet set, because we decided to try to make that, the industry leaders, which we've talked about in the past, we're going to make it a breakfast, we decided to do it at a lunch venue at Mangiamos, once they're open. And I don't know if you've gotten any update on how their opening's going?
I have not yet. I know they're going through final inspections, that type of thing, so, but we've had a couple conversations with Pete, so we're, I know it's real close.
Okay. And then, yes?
I talked to Pete today, and they're targeting February 27th.
Okay.
As their open date.
So we can touch base with them and try to get a date on his calendar for the luncheon, because we really like to get going with that sooner than later, especially if there's issues that may be tying into our goals for next year. And then, so that would be either like what we heard from that luncheon or questions that they like to ask. So it's sort of either proactive or reactive, kind of. And then I also put on here the professional bike race, which is my other topic for tonight that I have a handout on. Some of you know, because I think David's talked about, you know, we've talked a little bit about letsmove.gov, which is a national program to address childhood obesity and healthy living, and we've been working through our PUPS organization to address that. And last week, I think it was, I, well, the week before, a friend of mine referred me to this bike race that's interested in doing a professional bike race and also a healthy marathon. They also have a similar core mission regarding childhood obesity and healthy living. And I, conference called with them last week, and they're very interested in establishing a race here in the Midwest, specifically Michigan, ideally Celine, and they're flying out tomorrow, or even maybe tonight, to survey the community and also possible race routes. They have an ongoing program that's seven years old in upstate New York, and I warned them that it would be multi-jurisdictional. They said their current race currently works with 12 jurisdictions. It is a professional race that draws over 1,500 people. It's a huge deal, and all they're looking for is grassroots support, people on the ground at intersections and, you know, helping with publicity. So it would be a really great opportunity to put Celine on the map. They've already talked to the Michigan Bike Racing Association, the date's open, there's no MIS race or, so the, and other Commission of Industry Bureau has set up a lunch that time they're going to be at tomorrow and then drive around and see if there's opportunity. My only little worry is it's really soon, being May 14th, which sort of gave me heartburn when I first heard about this. But Celine's well-known for her volunteer activism, and I think this is a broader initiative that will, can be a county-wide initiative. I also talked to St. Joe's about, because they were co-sponsor of a race, I think in 2009, and there might be some interest there, too. So I just wanted to let you know that we're having some conversations about possibly doing that, and I know Todd will be reporting on Monday about the status of that. So, any questions? Sorry, I'm late.
I could tell this is a serious group when they said that road race for amateurs was going to be 60 miles.
Yeah, it's, well, you know, the Saturday is pretty, this started as a professional road race, and they identified that. There were a lot of young people, they used to have a whole field of bikers, professional bikers, and they don't have, there's like a whole generation that's missing now in the professional bike realm because kids aren't biking. And so they actually developed this training program, and the more they learn about, you know, activities for kids, and the more they realize that there is this whole void of, you know, healthy living around biking for kids. And we actually, you know, we've done some community bike rides here in Celine that started at City Hall. So there were many overlaps, and I, the two guys that are, the director and the chairman, Peter and Dieter, I talked to a number, for about an hour on Monday, and they are both engineers, and they're very logistically oriented, and they have everything down, like all their Ts crossed and all their Is dotted, and insurance is covered by the US Cycling, you know, Association or something. I mean, I have a bunch of notes. So I think the biggest question is, and the other thing I always thought, you know, dirt roads, you know, most people I know, I biked bridgewear all the time, but most people I know hate going on the dirt roads, and that's the whole important piece of this race, is that it's a European-style race, they're very oriented that way. So so far, a lot of people that I mentioned it to seem to be very gung-ho about it, and I did bring it up at the Chamber meeting, John Olson was there, and they seemed to be very interested in it. So nobody said to me, no way, you know, this is a really bad idea. So I think, you know, we'll figure out a way to get this going if they feel like it's a good fit. But when I talked to them, and they actually said they've been doing a search, because they want to start doing this nationally, and it's not just a one-off where they're going to move this, it's, they want to establish a program here that would be a long-term program. So, but they said they had already sort of, you know, coincidentally pulled up Celine, because other regions are already pretty big biking regions, maybe in a rural area. So it was sort of weird how that worked out, but it's a great thing. I think that could be a great thing for Celine. So just want to let you know about that, what's going on. Does anybody have any questions about all that stuff I just rushed through? Yes, David?
One comment on the potential joint meeting with Chamber. If we could select March 9th as opposed to the 2nd, it's probably better, because many of the same people are involved with CQC, and that is also a meeting date on March 2nd.
Okay. This, is there, you want to just try to develop consensus right now about, does March 9th work for everybody?
That's fine.
It's better.
At this point, it's fine.
Why don't we say March 9th, and then if you could all check your calendars by the end of the day tomorrow, or tonight, actually would be ideal, and let Todd know if that doesn't work, but we'll say March 9th. And then if you, this is the preliminary based on discussion, if you have, I'm sure there will be other things that we add before then. They will be having their executive committee meeting next Wednesday, or the 16th?
The 3rd, yeah, 3rd Wednesday.
So I'm sure they'll be adding some additional things to the agenda that, so this is just really preliminarily, you know, set up, and if you have anything you want to add, I'm Todd, and I are working through this, so could send it to Todd. Any other reports or announcements? I had a question for, there was an email that I got about, sorry, Glenn, energy project funding. Did you get that today? From the southeast Michigan?
Right. The Energy Office?
Yeah.
Yeah, I briefly looked at it, but I know you have to formally join the office, and also, and I'm not exactly sure what this entails or how much, but you also have to contribute financially to their endowment as well. But I, that's, I did not look into.
Okay, I just want to make sure you got it, because it looks like there could be some opportunities for those two that we applied for.
We're also, we're out, the county, Washita County, their monies that they received, they will be, we should be seeing something soon. They actually put a call-out if there is, if there's any interest, any projects.
Oh, good.
And so we submitted those projects that were turned down, the ECBG grant. And so talking with the county here a couple of weeks ago, they said that they would be, it sounds like they'll be issuing an official program where we could officially apply, because right now, it's just, they want to see what kind of interest or projects were out there. So it sounds like they are going to be receiving applications sometime soon.
Great. Okay. And then I just wanted to say thank you to the DPW for all your sleepless nights, and keep up the good work on keeping the roads clear and hopefully. Hopefully, you didn't get too many wild and crazy calls all, you know, in the middle of the night or anything. I know it's been a lot to keep up with the last couple of weeks, but we do, if you could please pass on to the employees, we do really appreciate their dedication to keeping our streets clean and safe. And I know our citizens do, too. Thanks. Okay. Any other comments, discussion items? If not, under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come over at this time, may comment or question to City Council. This public comment will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. You want to say anything? No? Are you here for your scout badge? No? Kind of, sort of? Okay. Is there any other business to come before the Celine City Council? Our next meeting's on the 14th at 7:30, and we need a motion adjourned at 8:26.
So moved. Second.
Tomorrow, second. Ivy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.